Good evening to the number six meeting of the year. This today is February 26th. We'll be meeting a meeting called to order presiding officer. Alyssa, can you please read the statement, please?
In compliance with chapter 231, a public law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 5th, 2024, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River. Mayor Gindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Seula?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yeah.
Councilman Krenzel?
Here.
Council President Olivera?
Here.
All rise for the salute.
The flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. May be seated. On the agenda, there is unfortunately, we didn't write down that there is one award and there is one presentation. I'd like to start off with the award first and then we'll get into the presentation, which is going to be conducted by Christopher Gouda for a presentation on Safety Campaign, which I will come to you after this. I received a letter not too long ago in an act of kindness and for that matter, to be recognized throughout our town. This came from a local resident, Linda Smith, 13 High, and she wrote this. I wanted to let you know about an act of true hero from our post office. While I was on while I was out Monday, February 5th, my mailman Brian saved my house from potential destruction. A freakish event occurred when the sun's reflection ignited a piece of cardboard in a very large stainless steel bowl, starting a fire in the bowl that was on my front porch. Brian, who had already delivered my mail and was across the street delivering, spotted the fire and ran over, grabbed the bowl and turned it over on my sidewalk to extinguish the fire. My neighbor Serena Cada and my daughter, who lives across the street, were there to talk to Brian after that incident. I arrived home hours later, realizing the magnitude of destruction that could have occurred to my home if not Brian's quick thinking and bravery. Brings me to tears. I have not seen him since the incident because of my work schedule, but I did leave him a thank you card and I went to the post office to speak to Bridget, the postmaster, about the gratitude for Brian's act of bravery and kindness. I would be grateful if Brian could somehow be recognized for his commitment to the safety and the safety of residents of South River and for going above and beyond his duties as a postman. All too often, we report all bad things that happen around us. I would love to see the spotlight shine on someone doing good for no other reason that than it was the right thing to do. I believe stories like this encourage others to to do good in the community. I thank you for your time and I am grateful and have such a fine mailman. Brian, I don't know what to tell you. Well, I'm going to bring him up in a second, but from a I'm a firefighter. Tony Seula is a firefighter. Our fire chief is somewhere in the audience. I'm sure they're going to say a few words. We don't know how to thank you for what you have done. We, the mayor and council, we'll read this. You could come up if you like. Congratulations and appreciation presented to Brian Tim for the heroic actions going above and beyond your duties while serving our community. This is half of myself and the council.
Mayor, if I may, Brian, as a firefighter in the borough, um, thank you for your quick action, extinguishing that. I mean, potentially, it could have been a complete working structure fire for us and you did the right thing. You're a hero in our eyes. Fire chief Craig Miller, would you like to say something?
Yes, absolutely. Following Councilman Seula's lead on this, being an ex-chief, Mayor Gindy being a firefighter of the borough of South River, your speedy actions prevented from us actually making it there, which is always a good day in our eyes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
My honor to be there, just happened to be at the right time, the right place.
Oh, thank you again.
Excellent.
Onto our presentation, Christopher Gonda, sorry. He's going to present us with the presentation of Safety Campaign.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me today. So today I was invited by our local Green Team Alliance to present on a pedestrian and bicycle safety campaign we call Streets Smart New Jersey. Now, I represent an organization called Keep Middlesex Moving. We're the Independent Transportation Management Association who serves Middlesex County, and we support sustainable transportation goals to reduce congestion, increase safety, and improve air quality throughout the region. Now, our project projects are funded by North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety and NJ Transit. So in other words, everything I bring to you here today and the campaign we will work with all of our members on comes at no charge to the community. Now, moving forward, the best way to introduce the the safety component is to ask everyone in the room, do you think a goal of zero deaths on our roadways and streets is achievable in our community? And to follow that by asking if you think zero is achievable, if you don't think zero is achievable, who are we willing to lose? And do we think that zero needs to be achievable in our community? And last summer, it was brought to my attention that there is a horrific traffic tragedy here in town, and we knew that there had to be something done aside from what we're already doing. Now, my organization has collaborated with your local law enforcement and police department here in town. I was formerly the Safe Roots to School Coordinator at Keep Middlesex Moving, where I presented to all of your primary school and elementary school students on raising awareness and understanding the traffic issues when they're walking and bicycling to school. And we do that every year before the the Borough's Bike Rodeo held by the Police Department. And in my new role, what we're doing is coordinating more closely to the county's Office of Planning and following their lead to support their Vision Zero Action Plan. If you're unfamiliar with Vision Zero, it's an initiative, a transportation initiative that recognizes our transportation, transportation system through a safe systems approach. So what we do is recognize that there are certain criteria that have to be, have to be understood to know that death is not acceptable on a roadway, roadways, no matter where we go, and that there are five safe systems elements that we should be considering highly to consolidate our efforts as safety professionals, traffic engineers, and those who work in transportation. And those safety elements are safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads themselves, and post-crash care. Now, Middlesex County has already developed a framework that's based off of a greater framework by the Federal Highway Administration, and that's their Vision Zero Action Plan, where the county itself has identified pedestrian and bicycle high injury network corridors on county roadways, including South River's 535, that goes from Sayerville into, I'm sorry, Sayerville into South River and vice versa. What they had noticed was that there was a higher probability of crashes and higher number of crashes, including bicyclists and pedestrians on those roadways. So what they aim to do with this plan is to identify education campaigns, other safety projects, and policy adoption and implementation to remedy what could be done to improve our roadways from a policy standpoint and our transportation spaces from an infrastructure standpoint. So moving forward, what we aim to do is support our friends in the county through their pledge to decrease traffic deaths within half the time between now and 2040 and to completely eliminate traffic deaths by the year 2040. It sounds highly ambitious, but based on the approach of the the Federal Highway Administration and the county's lead and the municipalities who are following by adopting their own Vision Zero plans, we believe that it is achievable. And one of those components that falls into the education is the education campaign that I was welcomed to here to present. But before I get to that point, what I wanted to promote also is that South River in 2017, as Dorian, Dorian had informed me, has adopted a complete streets policy. And what that policy recognizes is that it is the borough's intentions to understand that the streets as public spaces should be built for everyone and accommodate everyone for the sake of safety, health and wellness, and economic development. So safety is a primary goal of Complete and Green Streets and is often the most vulnerable road users, like bicyclists and pedestrians, would reap the most, would gain the most benefits from such a policy. But these policies, they do become antiquated after some time, and it is time for the borough to review that policy and to see if there are any necessary amendments that can be made as per the new standards by the Department of Transportation and its model policy for Complete and Green Streets. And again, moving forward, this is something that we're that Keep Middlesex Moving is offering to provide our consultation services in a way to to review your policy and help provide any relevant suggestions or recommendations for amendments. So that would be a great first step, and you're already there in regard to recognizing that these spaces are for everyone and that we do want to make them safer. Now, Streets Smart NJ is a pedestrian and traffic safety campaign developed by the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, and it has come through our work program as KMM to work with communities to develop the awareness campaign through whatever social media channels you may have or through your local businesses. And as what we've done in the past was work with the local business alliances to promote signage like here that's right next to our friend Dorian, if you wouldn't mind passing me one of these. This is one of our more recent posters to promote New Jersey's latest safe passing law. So simply it's saying to drive smart and we move over safely and allow four feet for other road users and depicted on the graphics, we have scooter users, pedestrians, people using a variety of mobility devices and bicycles. The study comes with a survey which measures how many people or residents or those who drive in the neighborhoods of South River can identify what that they have seen these signs before the study begins and then afterwards to find out whether they were effective by doing traffic counts and speed counts and to find out whether there has been a positive change in driver behavior. Also with that campaign, we have tip cards that are distributed through the businesses and to the schools and any media outlets that are able to promote what that signage is for. Now, how this falls into the Vision Zero framework that I had mentioned before, this is just one tool in regard to educating the public and making them more aware of the concerns for those who are walking in our streets and driving in our streets and what we can do to easily and more, more cognitively adhere to the traffic laws and to be more kind to the people who are using these spaces as well. Because again, the the streets and complete streets are made for everyone and we want everyone to be safe out there as well. Another tool that we have at our disposal is the New North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority's Demonstration Project Library. So if you identify within your region, a specific intersection or streak that could use traffic calming or another type of treatment to to calm the traffic or slow down the cars, whether it be to visually narrow the lanes or to place flexible posts or other materials to make the lane appear more narrow to slow down drivers, what we can do is a quick build or temporary demonstration project to test what that would be like for the drivers and their experience and to see what it would be like to improve safety. Are these treatments going to slow traffic down and is this something that we would want long term? Now, these temporary demonstration projects can take, can be placed and installed for about a week to about a month, depending on what safety outcomes you're really looking for. They they won't cost anything aside from possibly the assistance of your Public Works Department to help us transport some of the materials, but the data collection and the the design for the project all comes with Keep Middlesex Moving's funding and our programs. But I find it highly attractive as we worked with another local, smaller borough here in Middlesex County, Donellen. They had requested a variety of them to serve their school neighborhoods as well as other neighborhoods where the the traffic volumes and speeds were very high near the school, the school zones. So what we did was design curb cuts, I'm sorry, not curb cuts, the opposite of curb cuts. We designed curb extensions. So by making the curbs extend towards the intersection, you're narrowing the intersection, making the crossing distance shorter while at the same time leaving those corners closest to the intersection free so folks don't park there and block the visibility for those who are turning and can clearly see the pedestrians in the crosswalks. And when we proposed a specific intersection to our friends in Donellen, they gladly said, okay, we love the idea, we're just going to build it straight up, we're not going to work with the demonstration project. But it gave them the opportunity to to work with us and to to see what the design would look like before actually settling on the on the decision themselves. So the temporary design project can go a long way in regard to just visualizing it ourselves or to give us the the moment to experiment with how drivers are actually using those spaces once the demonstration project is implemented. And but among the options I'm proposing to you today, there the policy review for your current Complete Streets policy and recommendations for the new Complete Street, Complete and Green Streets standards by New Jersey Department of Transportation, the Streets Smart Campaign by New North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, and our ability to work with you on a temporary, temporary demonstration project towards the summer months of 2024. But I thank you all so much for your time and I appreciate you having me today. But for any questions, I'll make sure that my contact information gets to each each of you today, and I will send you the copies of the slides with links to further resources if you have any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions at this time? You could send the information to business administrator as well as our chief and our Department of Public Work Director. Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you for your time. All right, Alyssa, you want to go second reading?
What? Are you going to do the agenda session?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we're going to speak about agenda session discussions, which is going to be on five different new ordinances that are going to be presented today. I believe three of them belongs to Joe.
Thank you. I'm going to do two and I think Art's going to do one. So the first one, we have a rate change for electric and a rate change for water. We have first reading on a decrease in electric rates by about 5% and a first reading of an increase of water rates in 10%. And next meeting will be the introduction of the budget and the adoption of this ordinance will be a public hearing where we'll explain more on both these ordinances. And then Art, you got the other one.
The third one is a $950,000 bond ordinance to take our next step in our water line replacement program. What this $950,000 will do, once passed on second reading and then after the estoppel period, we will be entertaining proposals from engineering firms to prepare the project for the application to go to the DEP and the I-Bank. The I-Bank is a section of the DEP that works with municipalities on funding at lower rates than normally that we can get and larger amounts for a longer period of time. So once this ordinance gets adopted and the estoppel period goes, we will be getting some quotes from engineering firms to submit to the mayor and council for them to choose the engineer they want to go ahead with the project. That engineer then will develop a overall plan, an overall inspection plan, and a target area plan, which will then be submitted to the DEP and the I-Bank for approval. Once that's done, we can go out and they award us the contract. We're looking for $30 million. We can go out for the project to start as soon as possible.
Great to hear that. Two other ordinances are on my behalf, which is on the commission, sorry, filming commission, which, as you all know, we just shot a film here in South, in South River not too long ago. It was a great success. One of them is setting out permits for film commission or filming to be introduced in the town in the future to come, as well as the fees, the type of numbers that they would be requested to pay depending on the size of their film. Other than that, we have no other first reading. We will start on second reading.
Ordinance 2024-3, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend chapter 258 entitled property maintenance.
Make a motion away with the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. Anybody for?
Make a motion for the pass the, oh, sorry, public hearing.
Open it to a public hearing. Anybody from public, first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Krenzel. Councilman, council discussion, anyone?
These people, they're arguing.
Motion.
Make a motion to move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilman, motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-5.
Ordinance 2024-5, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend chapter 344 entitled records.
Motion away with the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. Opening the floor to a public hearing. First call, second call, third call.
Motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Council President Olivera. Council discussion. Have a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-6.
Ordinance 2024-6, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend chapter 22 entitled boards, commissions, and authorities.
Motion away with the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, seconded by Councilman Seula. Public discussion, anybody? Opening the floor. First reading, second reading, third?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Council Seula. Council discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
No, we're motioning to accept.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-7.
Ordinance 2024-7, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend chapter 193 entitled vehicles and traffic.
Motion away with the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
All right. When you said that, opening the floor to the public.
Burne, 11 to set place, you're environmental commission chair now. The commission is in full support of this ordinance, eliminating any ability to remove and find vehicles on Blue Acres property. We fully support.
Thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call.
Motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, seconded by Councilman Seula. Council discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman DeZemian, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
All right, first reading, 2024-8.
Ordinance 2024-8, an ordinance to amend the code of the borough of South River, chapter 155 entitled fees by amending section 155-30, chapter 30, water.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2024-8 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on March 11th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-9.
Ordinance 2024-9, an ordinance, an ordinance amending borough code, chapter 155-fees.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2024-9 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on March 11th, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the conference chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Do I have a second? Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-10.
Ordinance 2024-10, bond ordinance providing for improvements to the borough's water treatment, storage, and distribution system appropriating $950,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, authorized in and by the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-10 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on March 11th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Councilman, a motion by Councilman, Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-11.
Ordinance 2024-11, ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to create chapter 43 entitled filming permits.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-11 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on March 11th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-12.
Ordinance 2024-12, an ordinance of the borough of South River, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, amending the borough code of the borough of South River so as to amend chapter 155 entitled fees.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-12 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on March 11th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council? Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Moving on to reports, Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The D O T projects, the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four local aid programs, we are combining the two of them. We are well underway with the design and then we will be able to put those out to bid. The local transportation project grants, we've not heard anything on our twenty twenty-three application. If you want to submit one for the twenty twenty-four, we can. On the electrical substation, the contractor is doing some of the initial testing. And the stormwater assistance grant, I'm going to get you, Mr. Landenski, some information on the billing for that so that you can submit it and the work product to the state, get the additional ten thousand. And Mr. Zenga tells me there's another round available, so I'll research that and if you'd like, we'll apply for that as well. And that is it.
Anybody for, anything for Bruce? Joe?
Two resolutions. One is we're revising the all-inclusive playground resolution from last meeting. The state reviewed it and one recommendation was to have an all-inclusive family assisted use bathroom. So this new resolution includes that part of it. And another resolution, the seventy-five thousand dollar grant that was discussed at length last year, we got approved for it and we have to do a resolution to send to the state and that's the next step. That's it.
Anything for Joe, guys? Age?
Mayor, I don't have nothing to report tonight. All is good.
All right, fire chief?
I have a question, if I may.
Oh, sorry.
Potholes, when will you be going out with the fixing of potholes? You've been doing that? Yes. Okay, very good.
No, just in general.
Just in general.
Need to pop up every day.
Pick a street.
Mayor and council, we are currently operating in the fire department roughly about sixty alarms per the year and currently five of these six pieces of apparatus are in service.
Thank you.
Nothing else to report.
Anything for the fire chief? Legal?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I don't have anything.
Art, business administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things worth, I guess I'm sounding like a broken record. Still waiting for bated breath for the vendor to come and start working on the tile yard pumping station. Every day it's another day delay. They're working on another project that has taken longer than expected. Number two, on tonight's resolutions, you will be awarding a resolution for the chemical modifications to the water treatment plant. We opened the bids and the bids came in. We had two bidders. The low bid was within the financial money available and we were awarding that contract just waiting for them to get the equipment to come in and start work. The last thing is, the mayor asked me to explain, in the five years I'm here, I've become very adept in the operation of water treatment plant and how it works. As you might notice, people might notice on the website and you will be getting, in your next water bill, you will be getting an important information notice about drinking water in South River. I have learned that the hardest, difficult time to maintain the best quality water is during the summer and the heat. It appears that during the times of July and August of last year, the disinfectant residual chlorine was undetectable in more than five percent of the samples that we took. We corrected that immediately by making modifications to the system to increase the amount of chlorine. We received a notice from the Department of Environmental Protection to notice the public from July and August on December twenty-sixth. The notice basically says, what should I do? There's nothing you need to do. So we just wanted to make it clear that it was a difficult time due to the heat. As you understand, we have two water sources, our water source in East Brunswick. East Brunswick gets their water treated from Middlesex. Middlesex treats it at their plant, then it goes to East Brunswick, then it comes to South River. Along with the heat and the storage in the tanks, the chlorine dissipates over time. We have made that correction. There have been no other times that we have had non-compliance. We had to send the notice to the state to get it approved, to put into the mailer and to put on the website. That took a couple of weeks, so it will be in the next bill. But it really was just more of a notice that there was a period of time that there was low chlorine in the water. We believe that we will have a better hand on it with the new equipment and we understand in the summer what happens to chlorine. It just dissipates from the heat. We try to keep our tanks at ninety percent. It would work better if we kept them at fifty percent, but then we could run out of water. Because the heat that's generated on the tanks itself, and you remember, we had a hot summer, dissipates the storage water. So we've corrected it. The new system will be even better and no one should really be concerned about the notice.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. It's like our pools. All right, on to the council. Councilman Ciola?
D D C had met on February twenty-first, long discussions on signage and parking. So I know they're definitely starting to look into adding some parking signs for the municipal lots and working with the parking authority in the municipal lot for signage and the parking meters, things like that. Their next meeting is March the twentieth. What do I have?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ballas.
Just a reminder that the Free Rabies Clinic is going to be Saturday, March sixteenth at the D P W building. We have one more reading before that, so I will make the reminder with the signs. And upcoming library events, I went on their website today and it's amazing how much stuff that the library offers that no one knows about. They're having a leap year party on Friday, on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. That is at four thirty, but that's a website you have to register. There's some things you have to register for. There's little learning, little learner story time Friday, March first from eleven A M., at eleven A M. for children up to the age of three. Library Buddies Open Play, Monday, March fourth at ten A M. That's a free playtime for children. The Dr. Seuss Magic Show is Monday, March fourth at six P M. Keep Calm in Color, coloring for all ages. That's on Tuesday, the fifth at six. And International Women's Day, they will be screening the movie The Marvels Friday, March eighth at one thirty P M. And that is also someone you have, something you have to register for. You can go on their website. You can always go to the library and pick up their list of events. But they have, it's amazing, they have things planned all the way through to the summer. Earlier at our public safety meeting, I asked Age how we did on snow removal. And we were informed that most of everyone ignored their signs to remove their cars when it's snow covered. You gotta move your cars. It made it very difficult for people to plow and that was a significant storm. You can't park under a sign that says, no parking, snow covered. I'm sorry. It just doesn't make any sense around the schools especially. You mentioned Johnson Place, nobody moved. James, David, no one moved their cars. You have to move their cars or you're gonna start, you're not even gonna get warned. You'll get the ticket in the mail. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
I don't have anything to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President?
In terms of parks and recreation, our winter sports are coming to an end. Basketball, we have our last championship game this Wednesday at six thirty P M. in the middle school gym. Our wrestling B team competed in its last tournament this past weekend and our A team will be participating this weekend. Coach Matt DeSantis is here. I don't get a really big chance to shout you out, so thank you for everything you do with our wrestling program. It's greatly appreciated. From a cheerleading perspective, our girls competed in Ocean City, Maryland this weekend. We had a, our eight U team compete and two U fourteen teams compete. They both did a great job. They're winding down their season. They have three competitions left, one at Brookdale this Saturday. The following week, they're at American Dream Mall and then on April fifth and sixth, I believe, we're going to Virginia Beach for the Nationals. So they are awesome. They, they're doing a great job. We're really excited with everything they're doing representing our town. Spring sports signups are open. Please visit our website. We have a number of items going on. One of the big things that I've been asked about from our residents is our summer rec. We're currently waiting for the board of ed to approve our facility request. Once we have that, we'll be able to start publicizing summer rec and we'll be able to solidify the dates and the times. So our goal is to hopefully have that by the beginning of March, so that's right around the corner. Hopefully next week, we'll be able to publicize that for the parents. From a budget committee standpoint, Joe mentioned, we had our second meeting last week. Everything's going really well. We're planning on introducing the budget on March eleventh. Something a little bit different we're gonna do, we're gonna host two public informational sessions, the first being March twenty-third at eight A M. in council chambers and the second on April twentieth at eight A M. as well, located at council chambers as well. Our goal is to have our residents come out, ask questions, the budget, it's all of our budgets. So if you have a question, we want to be able to explain it. I know we're implementing some things this year that Joe mentioned, whether it's the decrease in electric, the increase of water. We're really trying to minimize, keep taxes as low as possible and make sure the financial burden for our residents is low. So the goal is to, with the decrease in electric and the increase in water, based off the study we did, I think I'm the only one, Joe, that pays a significant more amount because I run sprinklers in the summer all the time. But realistically, I think it was what, five, six dollars difference? Yeah, yeah, and we'll be able to explain that in more detail. Thanks, Joe. So, and then our, our goal is to have the budget adopted on April twenty-second. By state law, we're required to have the budget up for twenty-eight days and we're gonna up six weeks. We want the input. We want you guys to come and speak to us, so please, if you have the opportunity, March twenty-third or April twentieth in council chambers, we'll have our auditor or CFO and the budget committee will be here to answer questions. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, the Office on Aging had their, not unfortunately, but they had their meeting today and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend for some prior commitments. But I can say that the income tax services by A A R P. are being offered yet at East Brunswick, Old Bridge, and Seirville. Please call ahead and make an appointment and they'll help you out with that. But that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Krenzel?
My report has already been given by the professionals, so I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. We're gonna open the floor to the public. You have ten minutes. State your name and your address. Anybody? This is first.
There's no way you guys can get out that early. No. Jim Hutchison, thirty-eight, Virginia Street. Just a, a quick comment, maybe a recommendation. When we go through the resolutions, excuse me, the ordinances, and when you get the second reading, you go through and you always pretty much just waive the full reading. I know it may have been part of the first reading previously, but maybe somebody can just say, once the ordinance is, is out there, that this ordinance does X, Y, Z. So that if there's somebody new in the public who's here tonight, maybe somebody who's watching the meeting on channel thirty-five, whatever it happens to be, they know what that particular ordinance encapsulates. I think it'd be a good idea just to, again, just a brief explanation on what that ordinance does. Again, so that it's not just, okay, waive the full reading, because when you look at the verbiage, you may or may not know exactly what that ordinance contains. Just a little recommendation.
Good idea.
Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else from the, from the public?
Hi, Richard Byrne, eleven percent place. I'll second Mr. Hutchinson. I, I do remember Mayor Guindy speaking earlier in the year about using the agenda session, about doing like plain language explanations of the ordinance on first reading. But, you know, like a paragraph included on the agenda published to the public would, would go a long way. I mean, I speak code in my sleep, you know, he gets all annoyed when I start talking about sections and that. But, yeah, that's good. I'd like to say that Bill Neary last year gave us a whole mess of those signs and so you all would see them around town. And, you know, like, absolutely, zero, zero is, is the goal. And, you know, we, as part of both the green team and, and commission, we'll, you know, work towards helping anything that you can get us in that vein. We have no highways, so all the deaths in this town are completely unnecessary, speed related, stop sign related. I always remember as a child, drive, I grew up in Colonia, Woodbridge, and we'd drive through Raway and they had these just wonderful backlit blinking stop signs. The entire sign would blink why, once a second and I'm talking, like, wow, why doesn't more places in New Jersey, as a child, have these? And now they have really solar powered, efficient ones. And I just saw one on Dunham's Corner Road. I forget that street that kind of people tend to- Yeah, it's, it's a ramp and it's actually a stop sign and nobody stops and so they, they put a flashing one there too. So that, that would be a thought for moving in the future. The other thing I thought was about, you know, raising the water rate and lowering the electric rate. I, I remember several times Mayor Krenzel talking about weaning the borough off of diverting electric surplus to the, to the regular budget and it seems to be a step. And, you know, I thought, hey, why not divert electric surplus to water infrastructure as well? So, wow, that, that, it's a, it seems to be a common sense thing to, to take up right now, doing it this way. So I, I thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Byrne, just so you know, on resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, one twenty-one, we're actually purchasing fifty thousand dollars worth of four-way illuminating stop signs with the H C D-
Beautiful.
-grant money that we received. Yeah, we're applying for it, yep. Thanks, Joe.
Hi, my name is Tabitha Forge, eighty-fourth Farrow Street, South River, obviously. I had a few of our tenants that I've called. I don't know what we would do or how to do it, but their electric bill went from like a hundred and fifty to five hundred. I don't know what happened, but it's multiple tenants in our building that's on Wayhead Avenue. So I don't know how to get somebody to check that or see what's going on with that. That's one. Two, the potholes, when you asked about it, I know it's a dead-end street, but if you've gone down Cleveland at the end, that is so bad. I mean, like, you're losing your car. It's like sinking. And somebody's got to go down there and get that fire hydrant fixed because there's a lot of water getting wasted. It's like, they just put a pipe to let it go out instead of fixing it. So, other than that, I think that's good for now.
Give your information to Art on electricity.
Mayor, I recommend that she stop in and see Mr. Dudis. What may be happening is they may not be paying their bills and the, the company that does the billing the computer automatically jacks it up.
No, they pay their bills.
You know.
They all pay cash.
You know, as long as, as long as their bill doesn't stay estimated, there shouldn't be a reason for any kind of large increase.
All right, Age, can you look at Cleveland Avenue, please?
To give you a bit of a comment and everything on the end of Cleveland Avenue, I had been out there last week and everything too because one of the residents, he had complained about his water being really bad there. It's a dead end as far as that pipe goes and what they've done is they've opened up the hydrant and they let the water flow. Unfortunately, when you get slack time during the day, it's fine because people are using the water and everything too. But at night, what happens is they shut it off and the hydrant, the column fills up with water. There's an automatic bleeder there, so that's a lot of times where you see the pool of water down there at the end of the street around the hydrant. That's what it is. It's the hydrant relieving that water, so it brings it down below the frost level, so it doesn't freeze. So that's a little bit too- So that's a little bit too, plus the fact too, that the street is actually sinking in that particular area too. It's, it's, I, I know I live down there. And, uh, what happens is the clay is shifting and everything like that too. You could see the fellow at the one end of the house, he actually lost his garage and everything too, because the house had settled so doggone much there. And it's the clay shifting down into the low spot, into the lower section. So, you know, to give you a little bit of an explanation about what's actually happening there, we are gonna address it the best we possibly can. Okay? With that, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone? Yes, you can. I'll bring him up. He, he can come back up.
I just want to address this Cleveland, the end of Cleveland issue, um, because I'm working part-time in the Water Department also. And I was out there two weeks ago. Um, I'm actually locating valves and hydrants as part of the, uh, update to the, uh, system-wide water distribution map. And, uh, we've talked about putting an automatic flusher at the end of that, if we can, so that it would eliminate running the hydrant. And it would just flush down into the, uh, the creek. Um, because right now, we just have basically a hose running out of there and the, the hydrant is, uh, is running. I have my own opinions, uh, based upon my 23 years at Middlesex Water Company and as a licensed water and wastewater operator, I have my own opinions. Um, I've shared them with the business administrator and the CFO. Uh, but I think once we put an auto flusher on there, um, and we do some other things, that should eliminate some of the issues. But with the amount of settlement on that street and just how that street is buckled, how the, uh, uh, the gas boxes are tilted, how the storm sewers are tilted, um, Jim Hutchison's opinion, that's not the bleeders. That's not. It's too much water. I think there's other issues there, but we'll see what happens. So I think once we get an auto flusher in there and maybe we can expose some other areas, I think then we'll have an answer as to what the issue is and that we can go forward with corrective measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Madalena Rivera. Um, two things. First, I would like to commend the dispatchers in their back to professionalism, because there was an issue for a little while there. So I'd like to commend them. I have an issue with the Police Department. Um, when a resident calls in regards to ordinance violations, it's not to be dismissed. And just because the person calls a couple of times, it should not be dismissed. Or, oh, how do you not, you know, how do you know? And it's up to the officer's discretion. How many times are they going to give, um, people with, you know, giant trucks and businesses a free pass and courtesies? If someone calls and gives an ordinance number, newsflash, if that person is telling you the whole thing and says, hey, look it up just in case, or have, oh, it's up to the officer to write the ticket. Um, hmm. If you look down the line, there's been a call being made, and not just by me, but by other people. The only thing is that, as you can tell, I have a mouth and I use it. That's a problem. That's a very big problem. And, and this isn't kicking in the Police Department, because frankly, I appreciate their services. I have always had their back because I live, you know, with my father. He's elderly and they have had to respond many a time. But wrong is wrong. They wind up ticketing other people, but for some reason, right there on North Side, they choose not to. And that's getting very frustrating. I will, um, address this, another situation in regards to EPA violations at another time. But I thank you for the time.
All right. Can you repeat your address?
Pardon?
What's your address?
8 North Side Avenue.
8. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? First call?
I'm second her on that one. I know what she's...
I'm, I'm gonna follow up with her tomorrow with the chief. First call, second call, third call?
Motion to close public?
Motion by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Melissa, consent resolutions, please?
Just mention the appointment first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I do have one of Mayor's appointment, Environmental Tree Shade Commission Advisory Board, which is, uh, Richard Byrne for chair. Hi, Rich. Go ahead. Melissa, please, council resolutions.
Whereas Resolution 2024-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it, and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2024-110 to 2024-121. 110, award contract to CME Associates for professional services for NJDEP Stormwater Discharge Permit. 111, permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the South River High School Booster Club. 112, property tax refund for a total disabled veteran. 113, appointment of Jonathan Harris as a Labor A for the Sanitation Department. 114, property tax refund. 115, authorize certain utility refunds. 116, approving a grant application with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for daily field repairs. 117, authorizing the award of contract for the water treatment plant chemical modification project. 118, accept February 12th, 2024 regular and executive session minutes. 119, authorize the bills and claims list. 120, amended resolution approving submission of a grant application to the NJDEP Green Acres Program for the construction of a completely inclusive playground at Gukowski Park. 121, authorize CDBG submission of proposal to county, to county Public Housing Agency.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas, Councilman Seola?
Yes, with exception on 119, staying from 23-02053 and 23-03451.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gretenski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, there is, there isn't anything for new business. We're gonna start off with Councilman Krenzel.
Yes, I had the chance to attend, uh, two wakes, uh, of two, uh, South Rivers, uh, people who gave a lot to the town, Bill Shiterry and Leon Kalashin, he being of the Auto Parts Store, but also of the Lions Club. For many years, he ran the Lions Club breakfast there, so, uh, we wish them condolences to the family and may they rest in peace. Uh, Evelina Urbey's retirement party was nicely attended. If you have not visited the library lately, you should. Um, it's quite something. Libraries are not what they used to be, not just books. There's more things going on there. Stop by, see the changes, see what they're doing. Congratulations, uh, to, uh, Brian and all those in South River who, uh, served this town quietly and, and helped, you know? Good for all of you. Um, one of my favorite bugaboos here, this little card here, be visible at night and in inclement weather. That's for all you pedestrians. I have often complained about that. If we're going to go with this vision zero, which is, means vision zero is towards zero deaths by, uh, motor vehicles, everybody has to help, drivers and pedestrians. And so please, please, when you go at night, uh, wear something bright and shiny so that people can see you. And, uh, finally, remember March 10th, we changed times, daylight savings time comes in, so, but just because it's daylight savings times, you still can't see people at night who wear dark clothes. So don't. Thank you. That's all.
Councilman Krenzky?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers in the town, especially our DPW from the last storm and everything. Uh, please, residents, uh, we just ratified the, uh, ordinance and everything too, saying that, okay, there's a storm coming, get your vehicle off the road if we can, to make it a little bit easier for the guys to clear the streets. Um, you know, it's not a permanent thing, but just so to make the job a little bit easier, to make it a little bit more accessible for our fire department or the police on a call, any type of emergency. Um, with that, uh, that's pretty much all I have. I'd like to thank all of our other workers and everything that we have in the town, Robert Wood Johnson and the other departments and all. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Um, attended Evelina's, uh, retirement, uh, at the library and that was a very good showing, like, uh, Councilman, um, Krenzel mentioned. Um, and the library does have a lot of things there. Um, if you haven't been up there in a while, um, there's a lot to do. Um, they do a great job up there. And this is also a very good pamphlet and it makes a lot of sense. And it's one of those things where things are very basic, but we all have to be reminded, um, this, if everyone followed this, we would have a lot of issues that wouldn't be there that are there. Um, and it's very important. And yes, this is gonna be followed up very well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
It's a hard time, my name.
I'm not used to calling her Councilwoman.
Donna. Okay. You're hesitating. Um, the weather's gonna be nice the next couple of days, even though it's gonna rain, so watch out for the kids. I will now get on my rant of parking by the schools. Stop letting your children out on the street side of your car. This close. Especially on Johnson Place on the wrong side, going down. They pull into the yellow, they open up the pa, the driver's side and let all their, something's gonna happen. And it's not gonna be, it's gonna be horrible. You cannot just let your kids out just because you're in a hurry to get somewhere. The yellow lines are there for a reason. The signs are there for a reason, but people just choose to ignore. And it's getting worse and worse. I see it every morning. I live on Fairview Avenue. They're double parking. It's almost like a game of chicken. Who's gonna let the other one pass? And then they decide not to. So then there's like, okay, who's going? Who's not going? Then the traffic goes around the corner, not that it's bad enough as it is. Just watch and pay attention to the rules. So you have to do. We don't want to see any tragedies up there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Seola?
Thank you. Um, just to add to Councilwoman Ballas, um, the weather is getting nicer and the kids are on the bikes. And they're dotting out, darting out between parked cars, running across the street. Um, it's happening not just around the schools, but all over town. So please, keep your eyes open, stay alert. Speed limits are 25. I find myself doing 15 to 20 sometimes when the kids are out and about, because they just, they don't look. They just cross the street, either on foot, bicycles, scooters, whatever. Stay alert. Um, just to bring back up, um, Malochevsky Funeral Home is gonna be having a shredding event in April. Saturday, April 27th, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. on Whitehead Avenue at the, at the Malochevsky Funeral Home. So I just want to keep bringing it up, so anybody that needs any shredding done, it's April 27th, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m., the Malochevsky Funeral Home on Whitehead Avenue. Also, um, our PD has been working diligently with people knocking on doors from home improvement companies. They, you need new windows, your roof is gonna leak. Um, I've called myself a few times to peace, to the Police Department, and they have responded and escorted the gentleman out of town. But for them to walk around town knocking on doors, they need a permit from 48 Washington and the Police Department. They must have IDs around their neck with a permit attached also to that. Last year, we did a, last year? 22. 22. We did a no-knock ordinance. Anybody who is interested in that no-knock ordinance, please go to 48 Washington, get your application, you fill it out, they'll give you a large decal for your front door. Put it on your front door. It's a no-knock ordinance. It says right on it. And if they do knock on it, they will be fined. So again, 48 Washington has the applications, fill them out and get the no-knock ordinance. If anybody sees anybody walking around town knocking on doors, going from house to house, please call the Police Department, the non-emergency number, 238-1000. Tell them what you have, tell them where the person is, and a police car will come up there. So please, keep your eyes open, watch out for your neighbors, especially our senior citizens. Make sure that nobody's going, you know, trying to do a fraud scheme on them. Keep an eye out for your neighbor on that. And Mayor, I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Council President Olivera?
So first and foremost, I just want to thank the council for, uh, passing on second reading, 2024-5. Um, what this ordinance does, it allows us to have records added to our list. The issue we were running into as a borough was Blue Acre Parking, semi-trucks were parking down on Causeway on Blue Acres, and then unfortunately, we had records that aren't able to necessarily take that size of a truck. So by increasing the size, you know, we're gonna be able to solicit, uh, different companies that are gonna be able to come into town and assist us. Uh, 2024-7, uh, does exactly what, uh, Mr. Byrne said. It prevents, it, it was already a measure where you can't park on Blue Acres, but we just codified it in the ordinance to make sure that, um, when someone does, we have something that we can fall back on. Um, I can tell you, in January, I think all of us were involved. We went to Causeway, a number of trucks were towed. Um, the gentleman screamed, uh, at us, yelled at us, said we're not business friendly. And my exact words to him, well, if, I'm South River friendly and I'm borough resident friendly. And I think it's time that these truckers understand that this is not a free-for-all. Um, and unfortunately, what's happening, we want them to run their business, we want them to do things the right way. And what's happening right now is we've turned into essentially a parking lot, especially down by the Causeway. And this is something that, you know, we'll start to see cleaning up little by little. And we're taking baby steps, but it's happening. Um, and it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but when you have oil leaking into, uh...
Storm drains.
Storm drains, uh, people working on, uh, trucks in the middle of the road, it's unacceptable. And enough is enough, and, you know, this is where we're gonna draw the line. So I want to thank everyone for taking the opportunity to review this and pass this, because I do think this will make South River better. Uh, Age, in terms of DPW, thank you for the storm. That second storm was kind of supposed to be two, three inches, and out of nowhere, I think we got, what, nine and a half inches? Uh, woke up in the morning, guys did a fabulous job. I had a neighbor that was, uh, you know, struggling, suffered from a recent heart attack. They came out, they assisted him. I can't thank you enough for, um, just the roads were in great shape in the morning. So, um, thank you again to all the DPW workers for everything they do. Um, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, like Council President, uh, spoke about the trucks, um, I can't tell you how much I've been pushing on this. We have enough of these truck parkings in this town. We're done. We're passing an ordinance, we're working on it as we speak today. Um, this is not Elizabeth, this is not Newark, this is not Linden, this is South River. Uh, South River doesn't, doesn't need to be a parking lot for trucks. So, uh, you're gonna see a lot of enforcement coming down the road. Uh, with the snow removal, I know it hasn't been easy, especially with moving cars, but not following the law is gonna get your car towed, or for that matter, ticketed. We are trying to do the right job and the right, the right amount of, uh, snow removal that has to be done for you. And it's not easy, especially when you're covering a, a town of 2.7 mile radius. Uh, the guys at DPW did a phenomenal job. I can't thank them enough. Uh, I know I was, uh, pretty much driving around, meeting up with some of the guys, and I know they were, they were very exhausted. So Age, please, by all means, uh, thank them for us. Um, Evelina, 10 years as a library director, she has done a remarkable... was pretty much driving around, meeting up with some of the guys, and I know they were, they were very exhausted. So Age, please, by all means, thank them for us. Evelina, 10 years as a library director, she has done a remarkable job. I had the opportunity to congratulate her, along with Councilman Krenzel, as well as DeZemian. She's surely gonna be missed. Our new director is gonna be Karen, so please come out, come to the library, see what you have. It's a beautiful place, awesome place for resources. I want to thank Brian, Tim, for a remarkable job in putting out that fire. You don't hear about this. And this is something that council is gonna start working on. We want people to be noticed in this town. All right? Enough with these bad newses. We want, we want to hear this. Not literally yesterday, as well as this morning or this afternoon, I had the opportunity to walk around to Monus Street, Hollander, and the reason being is because I keep hearing about brown water. Brown water is not going away. We're working on it as we speak, with the business administrator, Bruce, council, in regards of changing or replacing lines. Until that happens, we're gonna have issues with brown water. I must have spoken to at least nine or, nine or 10 residents. Out of the nine or 10, three of them actually had brown water. It still lingers upon us. Now, we have had several, several water main breaks since the cold has pulled in, and it doesn't stop. As a matter of fact, I have a letter from our very own Thomas Dominicki, and he writes this. Age, you're gonna like this. "On Thursday morning, February 1, 2024, about, about 4:30 a.m., I walked into my kitchen for a glass of water and noticed a white Ford pickup truck idling across the street with its lights on. I went back to bed, woke up that morning at 10 a.m. and noticed, sorry, 7 a.m. and noticed a white Ford pickup truck still there. At about 8 a.m., a few yellow BMW contractor trucks started arriving. I went outside and determined what was happening. Michael Smith, a Borough employee, came to me and explained for, that a water leak was detected by South River Police, and that he had come to the site earlier and was waiting for, waiting in his Ford pickup truck for, for the repair crew to arrive. The BMW crew were very well-prepared, arriving with the equipment for the job, and a crew of proficiency workers to perform the required remediation. A rectangular hole approximately nine by 14 feet was opened, the pipe was repaired, and the nearby fire hydrant was open and flushed to keep the water lines clear of all sediment. The hole was backfilled and covered with a hot patch asphalt. That whole, the whole job was finished before noon, and everyone left the site. I was amazed with the speed and proficiency of all the Borough employees, road, crew, police, and the third-party BMW contractors." This is South River. "We are working hard to make this easier for us, and it's not easy." You think, you guys. I have nothing else. We are going to go into executive session after that. There's nothing to be voted upon. We will be adjourned in a meeting once we come back out. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. You're gonna be bored, but do what you gotta do. Alyssa?
Resolution 2024-122, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the Mayor and Council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it and is hereby resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex of the State of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter, and that sub-subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Potential litigation, be a further resolved, that such record of the above discussion be made public, when confidentiality is no longer required."
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Donna. Seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilman Ballas, Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gretzensky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman DeZemian, seconded by Donna.
I missed it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Krenzel, seconded by Councilman Gretzensky.
All in favor?
Aye.